Right then, everyone. It's eight o'clock, we should start the meeting. Yes, welcome to Mr Miller, see you again, good to see you. So we'll go straight in on item one, the apologies.
Yes, apologies from councillors, Barbara and Anderson.
Okay, anybody got any declarations of interest? Nope. And then the minutes of the meeting held on 25th of January 2022. They've died on the forecast of agenda, can I sign those out please? I'll do that after the meeting starts. Minutes of the extraordinary meeting held on 22nd of March 2022, page three. Can we approve that? I've got the papers, appreciate it, thank you. And then members' question, item five, which has appendix five. Personally, this is something new and I'm pleased to see it because I think it formalises the questions. So where have I thought of the idea?
This was specifically good place because of the meetings that took place, it was Kevin was unavailable, so we had those questions.
But it's good anyway, I think. Anne, you got a question?
Thank you, I was just going to ask about the electrical work, it said the tenders should go out in February, I just wondered what the status was.
Yeah, there's a report, I'm towards the end of the agenda actually for funding, so yeah, it has gone out, it's come up here. So we just need some money for that, that comes up the ledger.
Ah, right, okay, thank you. And then the other thing is, sorry for my, has the PLC been installed, has that been installed yet?
It hasn't been installed yet, we've got it, the new case for it has come.
Right.
But because it needs wiring in, it'd be done as part of the electrical work.
Oh, good heavens.
We'll do that, otherwise we're going to have to wire it in, unwire it and do it again.
Right, okay, thank you.
Beth?
Thank you, Chairman, just a word, Anne, I think these questions and answers are really good, especially from a public's point of view. But some of them are on the page six, are very brief. Have the tenders been received? Yes, it would have been useful to have a bit more about perhaps when? But some of them are a bit abrupt. In the electrical work one, have the tenders gone out? Not yet, but they will go out on?
Yeah, I think it was partly because the, at the point when we did these, they were, actually I think some of them are from individual councils as well.
Yes, they were, you're right.
It was a slightly different context.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think if we were doing it in the future, as much as things for public consumption, then yeah, more information would be.
I think it also needs to be balanced, because if you could, tenders received, you could write two or three pages on that.
Yes, yes.
It's got to be a balance.
Yes, yeah.
And I would urge then that any councillors that are asking questions like this, either in a meeting or outside a meeting, try and be precise, more precise in terms of.
Yes, I'm sure if this had been in a meeting, someone would have said, yes, they came in on, or yes, they went out, or.
Yeah, and I think that perhaps, yeah, so on the basis of those ones, they were kind of almost direct between individuals, what I answered, probably. One thing I was just mentioning, if councillors had questions that they sent in, we would answer them directly rather than answer them through this process. Because I wasn't in the meeting to answer them at the time.
That's teachy, Kevin.
Okay, we'll move on to item six A, page control, page eight. If you want to run through it.
Yeah, thank you. Just to note really, for the overarching way that expenditure and obviously coming very close to the revised estimate, which they should, and the right way around, there's a couple of very small items in the expenditure that are very slightly over the one, a hundred, but not a lot in terms of money. And the other way around in terms of income, I suppose those are significantly higher and are on the right track, so yeah. If there's anything specific in there, I'm on track.
Any other customers?
Congratulations, because it was a difficult year, another difficult year, so well done.
Officers of Tumbril, thank you. Almost as much as. Steve Nider.
Hello.
Any other questions on it? If not, have all those in favour to receive this report. You have to hear this, thank you. Prove the following payments on appendix six B and this page. Fire away, Anne.
Okay, well, on page, excuse me, on page nine, against Listor Wild Limited, it says some cost Blades Depot, what does that mean?
You could probably ignore the depot bit, that was more for the finance officers' benefit, I think, in terms of where it was coded to. They're normal blades, but for the moment.
Actual iron blades, yeah, right, okay, thanks. And also can I ask just a bit about HMRC VAT, third quarter VAT payment, seventeen hundred and sixty-three pounds?
What page?
Oh, page nine, it's just about the Listor Wild, isn't it? So it's HMRC VAT.
Right, okay, fourteenth of Jan.
Yes, that's right, third quarter VAT payment, is that, is that anything to do with WTCMI, or is that, what is it in particular?
No, I think that's just the standard payment for the court, I'd have to check it, to be honest, I'd have to speak to the finance, obviously, to that.
Oh, no.
If I can do that.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, also on page nine, nearly near the bottom, sports and play consulting, limited five thousand pounds. So what particular aspect was that a payment for?
So that's the, what's going on there? A partner works potentially who's overseeing the playing area installation, and there were a group payments in two sections for that. So he's the one going through the work on site with the contractor each week and make sure if it's on track on our behalf.
Oh, right, okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Any other questions? Can I ask a question, not necessarily directly on the payment, but the clerk of works? Can we possibly get an off-the-cuff type report? Because it's great that they've got a clerk of works and they're doing the job, but I think councillors should be aware of the progress or whatever. Particularly on an exceptional.
Yeah, I can get an update, it's changing frequently, but yeah, I can get an update.
Is it weekly?
Can you discuss with them and find out what's the most appropriate time? I assume everybody agrees with me that we want to have some feedback.
It would be nice, sorry, to have some public feedback as well, to be able to put something on the Facebook page.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there's no other questions, we have to vote to approve those payments, all those in favour, please show. You know this, thank you. Item seven, page thirteen, open centre update.
Yeah, thank you, so just to note, there is mentioned the budget job at the Room High Rec, as that thirty-first of March was just over fifty-one thousand, which came in over the revised end of year estimate, because we had a few other things come in, which was really good and positive for the year going forwards. Also to note, the music and arts festival came back to us this year after a break, which is brilliant and it went really, really well. They've got somebody else organising it this year, so they had some challenges as well, because the chap who'd been doing it for years has taken a step back. And it went really, really well, we had some really good comments from the organisers about the centre and about the staff, so I'm really pleased about that. And they've also booked up dates to include in twenty twenty-five to keep it here, because they like the centre, so that's really, really good news. Citizens Awards, that event, those of you that were there, I hope you enjoyed that, that went really well and gave us a format, not just for our own events, but for actually how we can hire up theatres going forwards, for similar things. Got some really good photographs, because we had a lovely owner from Bournemouth, they came to photograph.
She was Wendy, she was Wendy.
And so we'll be able to use that for marketing purposes going forwards. And yeah, that's it, Richard, mine, I made a mistake.
Any questions, Carol?
I'd just like to say, I think the return on the bookings for Room High and the festival, I think, is testament to the hard work of the staff to get these bookings really up and running after such a difficult period, we had to congratulate them on that. And also the Citizens Award, I'd like to publicly say how well that was organised and how enjoyable it was. I did catch Covid from the front, but even so.
Bless your health.
I thought it was amazing and there's a lot of work and I just wanted to have it publicly noted in the minutes. I'm sure Beelze here would agree, but just to say thank you and it was a very good event.
Any other questions? So I have a question for you, Kevin. When we get compliments like the Woodley Music and Arts Festival, is there a mechanism to pass that on to the staff involved?
Yes, there absolutely is. So that comes in normally directly to the bookings manager, who seculates it to everybody, which was certainly nice. Yeah, we took the time to talk to the staff involved.
Okay, and echoing what Carol said about the Citizens Awards, I'm to be perfectly honest, I was gobsmacked. It was a quantum leap from the old way that we'd been doing it for probably forty years or something. You know, it was a real bootstrap into a absolutely fantastic event. And all credit to Anushka and Matt for all the work they put in, stick it getting Matt, whatever his name is.
Allright.
What's his name, Matt?
Allright.
Allright, yeah.
Allright.
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 And he was, he was great, and I hope you've booked him for the next ten years.
He may, but I'm currently discussing gigging with him, so I think that hopefully they'll be in.
Oh, he sings as well, does he?
He's seen the guitar, he's a talented man.
He plays in a band, doesn't he?
Yeah.
Well, it comes from Woodley, what do you expect?
I just want to tag on to the back of your question about telling the staff that it was good. Should we not have somewhere where we can tell the public how good people are complimenting us on the rooms?
Yeah, I can include that in the report going forwards, actually.
But they won't read it on the report, in the report going forward, will they? Because how many of the public read this?
Thanks for the Open Centre posts or Facebook or something, we've received a lot of feedback.
Or the website.
Blah blah.
It's website, isn't it?
Yeah, but yeah, I think on the website.
The other thing, actually, again, also following on from my question, is we now know that the organisers of that festival were over the moon. But we're one, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah.
You might want to consider, not help every time, but consider when the bookings clerk pumps it around to officers, it pumps it around to the councillors as well.
I think the public are more important, so to have something on the website for everything that we get a compliment for.
You can put it on the website, just send a link to the councillors. Okay, if there's no more questions and comments, we note the recommendation, because we don't have to vote on that at all. Item eight, page fifteen, town elected working party. Charlie, could you talk us through this?
So basically, we, well, I think that the format last year was a real improvement over previous years. And this year we hope to continue to engage the public a lot more. And one of the things, obviously, theme for this year is green policies. So what we can talk about in terms of what the council is doing in terms of climate change, what we're doing to help, and really bringing people who can talk about it at the meeting. So there've been various suggestions, you can look for yourself, we want to brag about both the Park Screen Flag status, various things about using bikes more and travelling, things like that, that are primarily sort of green projects. Sorry, Karen's got that.
When you finish, it's not.
No, no, it's fine, I'll finish.
Need done.
Yes, whilst I was delighted to see that having the climate's the main subject, I was very disappointed to see that the first item was Working Borough Council talking about their climate emergency, whereas Woodley Town Council have also declared a climate emergency. And the staff and the town council itself has done a huge amount to improve our sustainability, recycling, you name it, it's been done. And I think we've probably got a better list, certainly for Woodley, than Wokingham. And I would rather that, I haven't had time, I was going to talk to Juliet about it, to say that we should be sort of ragging about what we're doing. Wokingham, as I should say, we don't need Wokingham to say, but I didn't want to sit there listening to Wokingham Borough saying something that doesn't actually impact Woodley that much. Well, the time that it did was the cycleway and that, we all know what happened there. So I don't know that I'll be able to make it to the next meeting, I couldn't make this one either because it clashes with plans. But maybe that's the answer, we need to try and get along to the next meeting.
Yeah, it's next Tuesday.
And put that point of view, yes, because it's half a six and the plan is a quarter to eight, so it might just work.
Yeah, I think as long as we're following the theme in terms of what we're actually achieving, so we can then pass that on to all our residents, what we're doing.
Yes.
And as well as the wider borough schemes, but what, you know, we want to, yes, blow our own truck, but.
Definitely.
But at the same time, I think someone like Gremmy has an awful lot of knowledge in terms of pushing the agenda, green agenda, so. But yeah, absolutely, totally agree, we should talk about Woodley first and our achievements.
We'll feed that back in.
Absolutely, yeah.
Personally, I think the Wokingham Borough first is putting a framework, because they're dealing with the things, in theory, that we can't. You know, congestion on roads, for instance, we've got no control over that, street lights, again, we've got no. So as long as that isn't just regurgitating things and it's structured in that way, we could then immediately follow and say, that's great, that's the bigger picture, but this is what we're doing, and then balance it that way. But it'll be down to the committee to make recommendations on that, because all these, I don't think you're going to get through all these points.
No, to be honest, really, this is our first step, and then we have to start putting timelines against it in terms of who we can actually get on the evening to talk about it, because not everybody can make it, some people can, some people can't. So it's really just our sort of thoughts on paper, initial thoughts, and then.
It's a wish list.
It's a wish list, yeah, but once you start, like last year, we actually timed it, you know, introductions, X number of minutes, this extra number. So we've allowed, was it an hour? So, yeah. So once we start putting times against it, then I'm sure some things will fall behind, unfortunately, but.
Okay, and then the only other thing I've come up with, make, rebranding it as an alternate meeting, I think that's a great idea. Just means the standard workers' references, what have we changed?
Already.
But that's easily done, isn't it, Anne? You just sent me an email, can we change anything? Okay, anything else on this? I think it's great, I think this, this process that started off as an idea, it's now beginning to get embedded, I think it's great. It really is good. Charlie, could you convey my thanks to Juliet and Richard for the hard work they're doing on this? And making it something that hopefully will be sort of encouraging to come to see it. All right, so that's just a note. Town Centre Partnership, page seventeen. Both Beth and I were at that meeting, so if anybody's got any questions, I want us to be able to quickly answer it. Anne?
I've got, oh, two questions, one is, I was looking to go towards the bottom of page seventeen, maybe you think, will there be lighting in the garden? And I think that comes up somewhere in this document.
Look, you're talking about the community garden.
What, sorry?
The community garden.
Yes, yes.
There is already at least one, possibly two streetlights in there.
Yeah, there's two lamp posts within the garden.
Oh, well, I meant, it's more like spotlights, really.
What we, I've been talking for a long time with Kevin.
Yes.
Is at some stage, why don't, if we can, remove those streetlights and have uplighting around the trees? Because I think that will make it look really, really good. It looks odd at the moment with those streetlights, but you know, the priority was to get it planted. The priority was to now start maintaining it, and I don't know if you've seen that the edges, the edge plants now have been trimmed back, all part of encouraging them to become like a box hedge, and that's the ultimate aim. But it's still on as a wish list, isn't it, Kevin?
Yeah.
Along with the Thames water, feeding the water in there as well.
Yeah, the water supply is imminent, it was waiting for them to literally to turn up, so it'll all have some time.
Is that okay, Anne?
Well, sort of, I mean, I suppose I was thinking a smaller scale thing, really, literally little spotlights in between the plants. Because there's a public issue about laying cables through the garden, to help with something, like the P O T. Because they're saying there's a lack of power circuits in the shops, I don't know whether anything can be done, but I don't know about that, but. Would that be a borough issue?
Potentially, but bear in mind the borough still owns the precinct.
Yes, yes. And then the other thing, I was just, I was a bit alarmed to see remarks about the state of the car park on the sort of behind the shops facing Lytham Road, but to do with rats and all sorts of things it's talking about.
That's been a constant complaint and it's been fed back to the borough and to the landlords. Because it's rats in the rear of the retail units.
Yes.
It's the landlord's responsibility to, because the council, either the town or the borough, don't own that land, it's down to the landlord.
So I mean, is there any way of enforcing that?
Probably through environmental health, I would guess.
So I mean, do you think it's up to the scale where that should be done?
As I said, it's been fed back to WBC many, many times. But Matt, you can make a note, just ask the status.
Because is that one of the things that come back to the Borough Council from the joint thing of, you know, long as antisocial behaviour?
Yeah, I was going to say, that's could potentially be.
Yes, because some things have come back to the Borough Council, haven't they, from the joint thing with Westbarks?
Oh, you're talking about the PPP?
No, no.
No, the PPP was the joint thing between Westbarks.
Yes.
And Woking Borough.
Yes.
Okay. The, I can't tell you off the top of my head whether that's one of them that's come back, because not everything has come back. But I come back to the same issue is it is down to, if it's in the rear of the shops, it's down to the landlord to A, look after, look at antisocial behaviour, rats, condition of that place. The environmental officers will either come from the PPP joint partnership, or if it's come back to the borough, it'll come back, it'll be Woking Borough that will look at the environmental issues.
I just, I didn't know that they are doing anything, is that?
I don't know, that's why I've asked more.
Okay, right, okay, right.
Yeah, I can come in again, Keith, on the back of your comments. The boxes, gardens that we used to have in the town centre, we got rid of because of the rats that were living inside the plant boxes. And so if they get into the garden, it doesn't bode well for the future of the garden.
They haven't got into the other boxes that we've got, we've got quite a few boxes of plants.
Yeah, but there were a lot more than that, we got rid of a lot some years ago because of.
Yes, but I'm saying the ones that are there now, the ones that replaced them, and there's no sign. But I'm sure, Kevin, we'd be vigilant, that the officers will be vigilant, to see any signs.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what the answer would be.
Shotguns adornments.
There are more, there are more eating establishments there now as well, so environmental health officers need to be kept up to speed, don't they, really?
They're the critical players in this.
Yeah, because we need to make sure the cafes are not keeping anything, or the food shops, anything at the back that encourages rats.
Yeah, but then again, that's the responsibility, bear in mind, that has, we can't do over this job. Any other questions on that? So we have diverted to your seat.
Oh, sorry, first, what I was going to, sorry about that, the service level agreement with Woking Borough Council, what does that involve?
Right, the service level agreement is something that the borough brought in to try and provide predictability to voluntary organisations that they give grants to. What they used to do is give a yearly grant, and that voluntary organisation often didn't know until like the last two or three months of that financial year, whether they would get the grant again. And you can't manage an organisation, even a charity one, on that basis, you need a little bit more predictability. So they brought in a service level agreement for voluntary organisations, which will last three years. So that then provided the voluntary organisation potentially with predictability on funding for three years. But on the flip side, it also gave them a set of criteria that was mutually agreed between the organisation and the council that they had to meet. And if during those three years they were not meeting those criteria, then they would work together to try and find out why and correct it. So basically, the SLA for the TCMI is, because they get fifteen thousand pounds a year, is an agreement that defines what sort of criteria they're doing, and it's like to run two events a year. And it's very basic, because it's, the SLA is really aimed at charity organisations that, say, for instance, are providing care services or whatever, where it is critical that they're delivering what they're meant to be doing for that money. Does that help?
It does, so I haven't understood which way around it was actually, so it's for the voluntary organisation to comply with the SLA, it's not for, it doesn't say what Woking Borough Council's responsibilities are.
Well, the Woking Borough Council's responsibility is they give them cash, a fund.
Right, okay.
The charity organisation or voluntary organisations' responsibility is to deliver to what they had promised through spending that cash and other cash.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, so Town Centre Partnership, all those, can we double the conversation before we can sometimes affect the show? Thank you. Item ten, project schedule, page twenty, here, yes?
Yes, thank you, so just to note really, this has kind of been whittled down from the previous version, which, because of. which, um, because of the nature of some of the projects that ended up on there, it's become probably a bit less helpful. Um, what I want to do is, um, narrow it down to the active projects that we've got, but then, then add things in as, as we go. So the projects that you can see on there, um, uh, number one, two or three, to the, the significant projects that we've got. Um, that's what we're in full swing at the moment. Uh, and, um, uh, some notes on, on progress on those. Um, the bit at the end, so the box at the bottom of page twenty-one is, is not very exhaustive at all. That's the list, I think, actually, I've just added a couple of things to it with regard to the, the town centre garden, which we go on there. That will become a more full report when, um, uh, I've put together the capital programme for full capital to consider later in the year. And we've allocated some money towards that as well. And at that point, we'll be able to cost those up and prioritise some of those projects as well. And then as they come online, they'll kind of feed into the, the larger report, if that makes sense.
Any questions? No, let's have Catherine notice.
Just a vague question, what's an extended like walking path?
Um, so an informed path, not, not solid, solid path, not tarmac, uh, compacted, um.
Oh, yeah.
Polys path.
Yeah, okay.
So it goes a certain distance around at the moment, it goes to some steps. But actually, there's now an informal pathway kind of being created further along where people have continued on round, which makes sense to kind of complete that bit as well.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, so, um, in terms of the play area, how is the installation of that going? Is it making the progress you were hoping for?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's all on track. Um, our chat was on site again today. Um, we're managing things kind of day to day in relation to, um, access really for the public going through their, the path and, um, uh, the potential impact on parkrun at the weekends as well. That's what we've been trying to sort of manage through the course of things. Um, that's all on track. Um, client permission has been received for the, the one item of equipment that required that. Um, so yeah, we're all on schedule at the moment. But as we mentioned earlier, it's something that's all members, which we'll get a bit more, a bit more detailed actually.
All right, okay. And then the next one, the, uh, oh, right, okay, the electrics we worry, sorry, is that what you were just saying? There's, there's more later on that, isn't there?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing is about the flat roof, roofing membrane, how is that going?
Uh, that's good. Um, the large section is complete and looks really, really good about this space. Have the looks really. Um, uh, so that's, yeah, that's progressing well and, um, yeah, due to completion.
Okay, thanks very much.
Anything else?
No.
So we now need to vote to accept the project. That was a note. So we're voting, community grants, page twenty-two. We need to consider. These community grants.
Just a note on this, um, I neglected to put the amount for Woody bowling club in the amount requested column, which is also two hundred and fifty pounds, the same as with yours.
So doing, Cara?
Yeah, I was, um, I looked into two hundred and fifty as well, but I looked up the price of the bowling mats and they're twenty pounds each. So that worked out to about my, it won't go to anything more than that at the moment. Um, I just, like I say, I'm quite happy with those four proposals that are put there.
Well, two fifty is the amount that we can get. I would agree with you, so if you make that proposal, I would second you. Uh, is there any objections to just accept all of them? All right, all those in favour, please show. Thank you. Page twenty-five, Borough Parish Liaison Board. Um, I wasn't going to ask you to, someone I thought you weren't there.
I could propose that you noted it.
No, you don't need to, but anything with a sort of noting, you just don't need to put on it, it's just there. Okay. Is there any questions on this? We can feedback through Kevin. Okay. Woodford Park Leisure Centre electrics, we've got to it, and we've got to it, page thirty-one.
Okay, uh, so yeah, for those of you, um, uh, aren't aware of the electrics, the whole of the electrics of the leisure centre, they're due for, um, replacements. There's a lot of wiring there, which you can flag up in the last fixed wiring test. There's all done with cable and things like that. Um, some fuse boxes that are no longer compliant, although safe and situ, well past the next fixed wiring test due to their age and condition. Uh, we, um, uh, take the opportunity to change the, um, lighting there to L E D from what we've got already, which makes sense. And also to, uh, future-proof it as much as we can in terms of making sure we've got capacity there for whether we want to do other things with the building or with electrical supply to the building in future. So, um, tenders have gone out and have those back and are looking through them. Um, the reason that's not a, a simple one is there's quite a lot of variation in terms of, um, particular items of equipment and specification of those. And we want to make sure, um, as a sort of, we're, we're getting it right this time and building things in for the future rather than kind of taking it in a shorter term view at this point. So, um, we go through those tenders at the moment. We've had some questions of a number of the providers, just to clarify things before we move forward. Um, what that has given us is a range of costs. And we believe that, um, seventy thousand could be the, uh, significantly upper end of those. Should be quite a bit less than that, certainly hoping it will be able to quite establish that. But what I was, um, wanting to do was, uh, to get that funding in place so that we can move on it quite quickly, as soon as we've established which contractor we want to work with. Because we do need to get the work done as soon as possible. Um, the other side of that is, um, we spoke about leisure services, actually, uh, the potential impacts on activities in the centre. While the work's being carried out, because it's, it's quite a bit of work. Um, and there will be some disruption. Um, it's a bit hard to quantify that at the moment, depending on which bit they start on, which bits that might affect. Um, so we, we'll be talking to whichever contractor it is about that and how we can work, uh, work through that, obviously to minimise impact on users and obviously income. I also just wanted to note, um, in the recommendation there, uh, in terms of the allocation from available SIL money or the general reserve, just to note that SIL funding at the moment, our available SIL funding we've got is actually only, uh, just over sixty thousand. Um, but it could be, depending on, on how members wish to do it. We could do it from the general reserve or we could use that SIL money to mortgage, money cover it, and then the shortfall from the general reserve. So if, if members are happy to leave it, that, that it's either or, if it fit with both, which is what we did previously with, um, with the last couple of projects, then we can do it that way.
Any questions for Kevin?
Kevin, how, how have we selected one?
Uh, we have selected one, yeah, but the ones that are.
Isn't it, well, yeah, but we must have selected some to go back to.
Yeah, we went out to open the tender, so we went through, um, the, uh, contracts filed in government website.
So they do a P Q Q, do they?
Yeah.
Could you explain the P Q Q?
Question now.
Pre qualification question. I do a lot of work in construction, so I'm quite used to seeing what they are.
Just in terms of that, what actually comes here is we send out the, um, uh, we had a specification drawn up for that initially. We ask quite a lot of information from, um, our potential contractors anyway, in terms of their, to be specific, with the application in terms of obviously their, um, ability to carry out the work. Also in terms of their insurances, their, um, environmental, um, policies, et cetera. So that forms a part of that submission to the right stage, which quite often we can draw a few out. Um, we haven't, haven't made that, that sort of stage up.
Having had that, the experience of putting the roof on, having to argue with the contractor, it wasn't up to standard.
No.
To think that we may go down the same path again.
No, no.
Quite right.
Any other questions, Matt? So, two recommendations, one, members' notes, so that's fine, we don't need to fill it in. But then the allocation of seventy thousand, uh, from available SIL money or general reserve or both.
Sorry, Chair, could I just, what's, would it make any difference where the money came from, either SIL or general reserve?
I mean, I mean.
We have the money.
Yes, there's money there, sorry, and both. So, yeah, in terms of the general reserve, we've, we're moving into this year with a, a very healthy reserve, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, just over. Um, in terms of, um, SIL, that project would certainly fit with, um, uh, what SIL money can be spent on.
Sure.
Capital, uh, projects. Um, there are other things that will fit that. We're certainly not sure of projects that we can spend SIL on, um, and like last things from the reserve. So it, it, it is an appropriate use.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
All those in favour of the allocation, seventy thousand, either from SIL or reserve or both? Please show. Thank you very much, it's approved. Uh, climate emergency action plan, that's really just a note. But our first meeting unfortunately has been postponed until May, after the elections. Uh, item fifteen, future of general items, any of it? I suppose this is the best place for me to cover the two things for me. Um, two things that I've been correspondence with Deborah, Kevin, uh, that I wanted to mention tonight. First thing is, um, I've asked that the Woody Town Council become part of the Queen's Platinum Jubilee Beacons. Uh, the beacons recommended, or a particular beacon recommended by the organisers, is under five hundred pounds. So it's well within the permitted spend of officers with the, um, uh, aim that it goes up on one of our hills here in, uh, Woodford Park. Uh, it has to be lit, uh, and it's a, it's a gas one, has to be lit at nine forty-five P M promptly. That's what fifteen hundred of the beacons will be doing up down the country. And the suggestion is not to make a big deal about it, obviously need to fence it away around it so that it's safe. But just put out a general invite to the public, residents, anybody who wants to come just for that. Um, seeing the, the beacon lit. Don't know how many people will come. Uh, it could be packed, it could be just gases. But I think it's the right thing to do. Um, and it's quite a low cost option.
So, okay, over that weekend, which day is it?
It's, sorry, it's Thursday the second.
It's, it's on the first day of the Jubilee celebration.
Yeah.
Um, and of course, we'll have the Beacon Frondi Future event, you know, it's, uh. So that's underway. And then the other one is, um, the P R and marketing group. Oh, sorry, Cara, was that on the other matter?
The beacon, yes, I was being facetious. I was, I was going to ask whether it's going to be lit by a flaming arrow and who was going to, um.
Are you volunteering?
Yes, yes, I don't actually, I wouldn't say, I'd hit the mark, but I'd like to have a go.
Do, do we have insurance that if the arrow goes astray and injures someone?
But what happens if she's a minute late? Does she get home drawn on quarters?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, you'll be up half a minute.
Tower.
I think it's turning on the gas, actually.
Oh, it's.
Oh, no, they're, they're, it's, it's turning on the gas and then you've got something like a six foot long hole with the, the burner on. Um, so it'll be quite exciting. And the other thing I was going to say is the P R and marketing group, turns out it has not met since twenty eighteen.
I was gonna say, I can't.
Which, um, I was staggered, but that's the fault of all of us, certainly, that we haven't done that yet. Strictly speaking, according to the new constitution, we need to vote to continue that committee. Um, so it's not in the agenda. So I'm hoping formally you will agree we need to continue with that. And Kevin's promised me, we're going to get out, um, four quarterly dates. Um, because the theory, same with the climate emergency subcommittee, you should have a subcommittee before the paro committee needs. And it then becomes a report, the paro committee. Um, I think Covid has sort of taken our eye off the ball on that, the marketing. Uh, and we've got good people, and Yushka's very good. So she's been turning the, the handle whilst we're away. But, uh, we do need to have that meeting. So that's the end.
I just think, would it make sense to actually set up the committee at the annual meeting? Because we'll be asking for members of that subcommittee.
The committee will be set. What I'm proposing here is the existing committee, which was set up at the annual committee.
Is still.
Is, is still, and then we, we review that. Um, but remember in the new standing orders, if during the year there is a change in any political group's allocation, it doesn't have to go to full council. It can be done, uh, informally, or done through the paro committee. So that makes it a little bit easier to operate. And the last item is item sixteen, publicity and website. Anything, I think Beth's already talked about, the good news that we need to be advertising. Anything else?
On beacon?
Oh, yes, yes, once we, yes, because we need to do that, just the beacon now. Okay, if that's all, I will close the meeting. Thank you for attending, it is twenty forty-seven, forty-seven minutes.